Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our first meeting of February. And let's get the show on the road. All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach, held Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. On the roll call, Councilmember DeLaurie.
President.
Uh, Councilmember Mandell.
Present.
Councilmember Trastan.
Present.
Vice President McGinnis.
Present.
Uh, President Bendo.
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Donna Gaden and Deputy Corporation Council, Richard Barrios. Would I have a salute to the flag?
I'm gonna ask Councilman DeLaurie to lead us, since he's got his flag in the background. So.
Hands over heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Um, I guess just before we get to the city manager's report, I just want to uh express our appreciation to the city employees who put in some very, very long hours during this, this snowstorm. While we're all hunkered down inside, staying warm, they're out there plowing, salting and sanding our roads to make them passable. So uh, they, they did a, they did a real yeoman's job on this one and I just wanna from the council, express our appreciation for all the hard work that they put in during this, during this storm. So with that, why don't we get to the city manager's report?
Mr. Bendo?
Yes, Ms. Trastan.
I just wanted to tag on to your gratitude to all of our, our, our workers, to acknowledge the first responders that saved the two puppies this morning with a good outcome. So kudos to everyone. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Um, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Um, the first person that's reporting um tonight would be Mr. Robert Spalzino.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Gaden. I don't know if you can see, can you see me or hear me?
We can hear you, we don't see you.
Okay, I don't have, I'm not finding the camera, but that's okay.
Should be in your lower left.
Yeah, my report is brief. It's simply that we had scheduled the meeting for last eve.
Wait one second, it was moved up to the panel, he interrupted him. Hang on one second. Go ahead, there you go, there's your camera.
Good, so thanks. So we had scheduled a meeting last evening with the attorneys for Mr. Haberman. Uh, the meeting did not occur because of the snow, uh, because of the burdens on the city administration last, yesterday to deal with the snow. So I will be speaking with their attorneys tomorrow to try to initiate discussions about a mutually acceptable resolution of the Haberman matter.
Okay, that was short and sweet. Um, all right, uh, anybody got anything else on this? All right, seeing nothing. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thanks for making you show up for the 30 seconds.
Mike, did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to thank Bob, that's all. I didn't have any questions.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Bob.
The goal is, even if it's a short report, is so that everyone knows that we're still moving forward. Um, and he gave a, a brief report. And the next report is from Attorney John Gross.
Good evening, everyone. The um, there are two matters we were gonna report on very briefly. One relates to um, a resolution that's before the, the council this evening relative to the institution of litigation. My associate on Vega will speak to that. But before that, I was just going to give a brief report on the lease negotiations with the Martin Luther King Center Inc. organization in the city that I, along with the city representatives, have been conducting. We've had several meetings. Uh, they've been very cordial. We are focused on um coming up with a mutually acceptable lease instrument. Uh, I, we have a couple of sessions, I believe, scheduled going forward this month. Um, and we're hopeful to achieve an amicable resolution. Ellen, do you want to give your report? Are you ready for that, Donna?
Well, she can give it, but it's also item number two on the agenda.
Yeah, why don't we wait till we get to the item? That's, that would be the appropriate time to do it. We, we'll move that up to first after the city manager report.
Okay, sorry. Didn't mean to usurp your responsibilities, Mr. Bendo.
No worries.
Just streamlining the process.
Yeah. All right. Um, next is John McNally.
Good evening, everybody. Just a few quick updates. That's the city manager asked me to brief you all on. So uh, first and foremost will be COVID. Uh, in the seven day period that ended January 29th, there were 154 confirmed positive test results for the city, which averages uh, just under 22 cases a day, um, or point six six per thousand people. Those numbers, while still high, are down significantly from where we were a couple of weeks ago. Um, so you know, as we're seeing on the state level, uh, the, the holiday bump or the holiday spike that was expected, um, has, has come and gone. At least for Long Beach, uh, but that does not mean that we, you know, take our guard down or relax, uh, the standards of your living. Um, from a Long Island perspective, the percentage of ICU beds, which is obviously one of the key metrics that the state is using, remains at 21%. That has um stayed remarkably steady, really over the past three months. Um, and that is inclusive of elective surgeries, which, as you recall, during the spring, elective surgeries were completely taken offline. So our hospital's been in pretty good shape. And the overall positivity rate for those that have been tested on Long Island is 6.03%. So we were at 11%, 12% islandwide a few weeks back. Um, so we've, we've come back down to normal. And for the first time uh, in quite some time since well before the holidays, the statewide positivity rest, uh, positivity rate is under 5%. So um, you know, the vaccine rollout is obviously still remains frustratingly slow. Uh, we don't have vaccines for everyone that, that would like them, obviously, and don't even have enough vaccines for everybody that is eligible at this stage of the game. So we ask folks to maintain patience and to continue to social distance, wear masks, wash your hands, avoid gatherings, um, until such a time that, you know, we can get enough people vaccinated. And then just a few other quick hits. Uh, parking meters. Um, we, I spoke with our parking consultant yesterday, and he is going to be working on putting together the bones of an RFP for us. So we expect that to be going out within the next month, I would say. In terms of the electronic beach passes, we're just dotting i's and crossing t's and would expect to have something for the council's consideration also within the next meeting or two. So both of those are moving along pretty quickly, and you should see uh, those before you. And lastly, just as a reminder, um, tomorrow is recycle day as part of the new, new recycle protocols. So it is citywide and it is co-mingled, which is glass, plastic and cans. Um, so everybody get out of it tomorrow. Then next week is paper and cardboard. Uh, and then that alternating repeats itself over and over again. If anybody is confused, we know the calendar is not reflective of this schedule. You can go to longbeachny.gov backslash recycle, and there's a downloadable calendar there. Um, one pager that will give you the entire year at a glimpse. Um, so you never really have any confusion about, you know, which recycle week it is. And that would be my report. Any questions? Thank you all.
Hey, thanks. All right, and then the last thing that I have is I just wanted to say to all the staff that worked. Um, not only was it people on the streets, but we had um, some people in OEM that came in, they worked overnight. Uh, our OEM office was open, uh, open last night at six o'clock and was open till noon today. And so I want to say thank you to all the staff. Um, and for the residents, for every accolade we received and every complaint we received. When the team meets together next week to look at our, our lessons learned, we will look at all of those on things that we can do better. So again, thank you, everyone. That's it for me.
Okay, thanks, Donna. All right. Uh, Dave, let's move on to the agenda, but let's move item two up so we don't have to keep uh, Mr. Gross's company on the phone.
Public hearing and go to item two?
Yeah, and then we'll go right back to the public hearing.
Okay, so on, on the regular calendar, item two is a resolution authorizing commencement of litigation.
And that's Ellen in Ellen Vega?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, so this resolution is before the city council to authorize certain legal actions against individuals for the recovery of money improperly paid for leave time. Um, it's about, it's 12 individuals and the amount is $174,751.
Okay. Uh, any questions from the council? All right, seeing none. Dave, we got any questions from the public?
Uh, yes, we have Roy Lester.
Okay.
Go ahead, Roy.
Uh, yeah, this is uh, different than the litigation we've already started. In other words, different people? Or have we uh, caused different causes of action against the same people?
Uh, yeah, I just saw Ellen unmuted.
All right. Um, yes, this is for new individuals and separate and apart from the two litigations that have already been commenced.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, Dave?
Uh, no, that was it.
Okay, great. Uh, John, Ellen, thank you very much. We appreciate it. And um, we'll talk to you soon. Uh, let's go back and go to the public hearing.
Okay, so we have a public hearing for item number one, which is a resolution granting waiver of all street parking requirements for premise 162 East Park Avenue, street floor, Long Beach for a retail gift shop. And we have the proprietor on, let me, oh, John already did it. Okay, Ms. Scudin?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can. Hi.
Hi, how are you guys?
Okay, you're abandoning the West End.
I am. I'm trying to centralize myself to be available for all Long Beach residents.
Oh, okay. It's not gonna be the same walking by not seeing you there.
I know, we were sad to leave. Hopefully we'll be back there one day and have a second location too, so.
Oh, that would be nice. Okay, uh, I mean, uh, well, I was gonna say, I, I was going to assume most of the council's familiar with the codfish cowboy, so um, not a lot to discuss about the business. I guess just, uh, do you anticipate much in the way of deliveries?
Uh, no, you know what? I split them up. So I have them go to three different locations so that it minimizes the disruption of traffic.
Okay.
On the busy streets, so.
All right.
Don't wanna pick up the third lane.
Well, you'd be one of the few. That does. Uh, all right. Um, and then I guess how many employees do you anticipate having?
Um, so we're gonna probably, gonna be employing more people now.
Okay.
So I'm probably gonna be probably upwards of 10.
All right, uh, but, but at any one time in the store, probably what, just a couple?
Oh, no, so, yeah, two max.
Okay, all right. Are your hours, uh, what are, what are your hours gonna be?
Um, they're, they're gonna stay the same. Uh, 10 or 11 to, to seven on the off-season and then 10 to seven during the, the summer and Christmas, and Christmas time.
Okay, uh, great. Uh, are there any questions from the council members? All right, seeing none. Do we have any questions from the public?
Well, hands raised at this time.
Okay, then great. Then I'm gonna close the public hearing and why don't we move on to uh, vote on this so Ms. Scudin doesn't have to stay on the phone?
Okay, so we're gonna vote on item number one, which is a resolution granting waiver of all street parking requirements for premise 162 East Park Avenue, Long Beach, New York for a retail gift shop. Who introduces move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember DeLaurie.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes, and I look forward to that second location.
All right.
All right, have a good night.
You too.
Okay, on to the rest of the regular calendar. We've done items one and two. Onto item three, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with New York Rangers LLC.
All right, is Donna, that you or Mr. Brand gonna join us or?
That's Joe Brand.
Okay.
Uh, he is not on.
Okay, go to the next one. Um, it's, it, go to the next one. Let me call him.
All right, so item four.
Over to item four, which is a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the current agreement with coastal planning and engineering of New York PC and assisting the city in our coordinated efforts with the US Army Corps of Engineers.
Okay, I'm gonna assume that's Mr. Fabrizio?
Okay, Joe, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I believe this will be the fourth amendment to the Coastal Planning and Engineering Consultants Company, uh, to continue to assist the city with issues related to the Army Corps of Engineers Coastal Storm Risk Management Project for the South Shore, Long Beach. Um, the intent of authorizing additional funding to CPNE is to continue this assistance. Um, while the project's essentially complete, um, the city never formally accepted the project because of several issues with the new groins, um, as well as the old groins that were never replaced. Um, moving forward, CPNE is gonna represent the city with any reporting requirements to further the city's position on these issues. Um, in addition, the, the US Army Corps has proposed a, it's called an O M R R R manual, which means Operation Maintenance Repair Replacement and Rehabilitation Manual. It's a nice acronym. Um, essentially this document outlines.
Fabrizio, this is Liz.
Hi.
Can you see if you could adjust your microphone? You're a little garbled, or is it just me?
Any better, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Um, the Army Corps has proposed a operation maintenance, repair, replacement and rehabilitation manual. Um, essentially this document outlines city responsibilities that must be implemented in order for our beach to maintain its standing as an engineered beach. Um, some of the requirements of the O M R R R, um, the city has to perform um, annual inspections, including beach width measurements across the entire shoreline. Um, we have to perform inspections of the groin field and record any changes in the conditions of the groins, including settlement, rock displacement, um, cracking, et cetera. Uh, we must document maintenance of the dunes, including um, dune plantings and snow fencing replacement. And we also have to submit annual inspection reports. Um, but in addition, CPNE is gonna be assisting us with, um, we wanna put two additional vehicle walk, uh, crossovers, one at Long Beach Road and one at National, under the boardwalk and over the dune. These are traditional entry and exit points for smaller vehicles. Um, and under this extension, we're gonna authorize them to uh, prepare the permit applications for the Army Corps and, and the NYSDC. Um, so hopefully we could have those. And, and actually, beach maintenance is also gonna build those. So we're, they're gonna do the permits and each maintenance is gonna build the walkovers. I'm sorry, the vehicle crossovers. Um, and that's pretty much it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the council members? All right, seeing none. Any from the public?
Uh, Roy Lester has his hand up. Hold on.
Okay.
Go ahead, Roy.
Okay, um, so the crossovers, are they going to involve the cutting up a barrier under the boardwalk?
No, what they're gonna do is we're gonna, like, right now at National Boulevard, you can traverse under the boardwalk, but now you can't, there's no access for a vehicle to go over the dune. So we're gonna build a similar crossover like we have at New York Avenue and Pacific. So a small vehicle like, uh, you know, small lifeguard truck or a small ATV, um, can actually cross over. Right now, we only have those two access points.
Right, right, and they work fine. So there won't be any break in the boardwalk. It'll be over the boardwalk.
No, no, it's gonna go under the boardwalk. He's gonna go under the boardwalk and over the dune.
Okay, and, and Pacific, you have an over the boardwalk and since it's the end, oh, not Pacific, I'm sorry.
Pacific, right, right, yes. I guess over the dune.
Over the dune.
The same thing.
It's a shorter dune, though. Okay, um, the other thing, are these the same people that have been kind of advising us on this construction since, I guess it's uh, 2010?
Yes.
Now, from what I've heard at, at these meetings, we're not happy at all with the construction that the Army Corps of Engineers did. We have a lot of problems with them. Yet these people have been advising us all along. Did they advise us to do things differently and we just couldn't do it, or?
No, that's not the case at all. They've actually, um, they were a big advocate and put together correspondence basically of stating that the actual groins were basically installed incorrectly.
Okay. So they all along have been telling us that this is not going right?
Oh, absolutely, yes. And, and we have documentation. But this is the, you know, this is a continuation of, of their agreement to assist us when necessary. No, they've, they've, they haven't, they've put together an engineering report that we submitted to the Army Corps that clearly, clearly explains um, that there's a defect in the groins.
No, what, I'm sorry, what I'm asking for is they've been involved for the last uh, 11 years. Did they tell us along the way that this isn't, wasn't going right?
They have told us that what they're doing is incorrect and not, and out of character with what they normally do with the rehabilitation of a groin. Normally what they would do with a groin, um, is they would put a subbase or a subgrade.
Right, yeah.
Underneath. What they did in our case, since they were rehabilitating a groin, they did not build a sub, sub, uh, subbase for the extension of the groin, and it's just basically placed on sand, which is against everything they've, they typically do. But the Army Corps has refused to address the issue.
But we, we advised the Army Corps prior to them doing that, that it was wrong, correct?
Yes, we've been fighting with them since, during the construction, before the construction, after the construction, it's been an ongoing battle. Unfortunately, they're taking a hardline approach. Their response to us when we bring it up is, you know, what, what does a groin do? We, um, and they, they say it's supposed to break waves and capture sand. That's what it's doing, so there's no issue, which we vehemently agree, I disagree with that approach, but that's their approach, that's how they feel, that's what they're saying.
Well, it might be true, but it's not gonna do it if it sinks, and it's not there.
I, I agree with you, and our consulting firm agrees with you. Unfortunately, the Army Corps, um, is a very difficult entity. It's like they don't wanna admit they made a mistake or something. It's very, alls we can do is keep documenting it, but that's really.
As long as we warn them ahead of time, then we have a good legal, like.
Anytime you want, I can show you the reports that we submitted. They're very detailed. Um, and uh, so if you need any more information from me, please feel free to reach out.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else, Dave?
Uh, nope, that, that was the only hand.
Okay, I see Councilman DeLaurie's got a question?
Yes, I just have a question for uh, Joe Fabrizio. Joe, if you know what the traverse uh, route will be, meaning you have to go under the boardwalk at National and Long Beach Road, I imagine you have to go left or right to get that um, that height properly?
Um, I'm gonna talk to Tommy and defer to him when we put in the application. We'll address that. Um, it depends, because right now, when you go under the boardwalk at National, there's a walkover immediately to the east. So I would presume that therefore it would probably go, if you're going from, from north to south, that you would go under the boardwalk, um, over the dune and go to the west.
West, okay.
That would be my thought. But um, again, the city forces are attentive for, for um, the beach maintenance to erect it. Um, and we'll deal with that when we do the permit application and ultimately construction. But that would be my guess. It would probably go to the, towards the west away from the, at least at National, away from the walkover.
And my last question, Joe, does this firm, Coastal Engineering, or, um, do they involve themselves in any of the design for this type of work?
Well, what they do actually is they, they, they're all familiar with it, but in this case, like for the actual permit, they're gonna sub it out to another firm. I can't recall the name offhand.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. That's all my questions I forgot to ask them earlier.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Joe.
You're welcome.
So why don't we move back to item three?
Um, yes, I, it appears that he had to call in.
We've got him.
Yep.
Oh, you have him? Okay, I was trying to call him, I couldn't get a hold of him.
Yeah, I see his number up there, the nine eight nine. He's on mute. You see him?
Yeah.
How we doing now?
There you go. We got you.
I'm in?
You're in.
All right. Good evening. Um, uh, real quickly, uh, just in, in regards to item number three, um, as everybody's aware, uh, back in October, early November, uh, there was an, fed out for um, landlord tenant agreements at the ice arena. Uh, the one program that uh, that hasn't come back yet, well, is the partnership agreement that exists between the city and the New York Rangers. It's the Junior Rangers Learn to Play Program. This will be a 10-week uh, program that's offered to people in uh, Long Beach and surrounding communities. Um, it's a subsidized program by the NHL, the New York Rangers and Madison Square Garden. Uh, a grassroots, feel-good, family enjoyment type program that attracts uh, young kids into a program, uh, at an affordable, uh, at an affordable fee. The NHL and the Rangers supply the equipment. We're only required to supply the ice and the instructors for the program. Um, the Junior Rangers Program, uh, like I say, it all, the uh, flag that they fly under is the Learn to Play Program. There's a girls' component, a Step Two Rookie League component, and the Learn to Play where they get the equipment for free, uh, and jump on the ice for the first time. Um, basically, the Rangers do all of the advertising, they do all of the administrative work, uh, and they do the um, the uh, provide the instruction part of it. Um, we supply the bodies to do the actual on-ice instruction for the kids, and the partnership works, uh, where they collect fees and then pay us on a per participant basis. Um, and that's about it. Uh, normally, it's, it's a, there's three 10-week sessions, uh, associated with it. Um, but we've agreed or we're in the process of making the agreement that we would go strictly with a one winter 10-week uh, season, uh, just because of, um, you know, the RFP that exists for the operation of, of the arena as a whole. Um, we feel that, uh, we'd probably be able to get this program or 10-week program in comfortably, uh, and get these kids back on the ice, because they haven't been bad, uh, since the program was, um, you know, interrupted, uh, back in late October. So that's it.
Okay, got any questions from the council members?
This is Karen. Hi, Joe.
Hey, Karen, how are you?
Good, and you?
Good, thank you.
Yeah, this is a, this is an exciting program again, so thank you for all of your hard work to put it together. Just have a.
No problem.
Just have a few questions. Um.
Yeah, fire away.
Yeah, in terms of the actual resolution itself.
Mm-hmm.
It only refers to the Learn and Play Program.
Learn to Play, yep.
Yeah, so it doesn't um, mention the 10-week Rookie League. Yeah, so it doesn't mention the 10-week Rookie League Program and the 10-week Girls Hockey League Program?
Well, all three programs kind of fly under the banner of the Junior Ranger Learn to Play Program. They're just, you know, three components that make up the Learn to Play Program.
Okay, that, that's helpful to understand.
Yep.
From there, it just, I just get a little concerned where the resolution states that the NHL subsidizes the entire program because for the other, for the other two programs, individual, the, the kids and the families are required to purchase their own equipment. It's only for Learn to Play where it's completely subsidized. So the resolution.
The, the equipment part of it, okay.
Yeah, so I don't know what, Rich, do you think about that?
I mean, one thing is, is most of the kids that, that partake with the Rookie League, they're the graduates from the Learn to Play and they maintain, they keep the equipment, obviously, and they utilize it through the, you know, through the life of the program.
I, I defer to Rich on.
With regard to the provision of, yeah, Karen, with regard to the subsidizing or the proffering of equipment and things like that, we can build into the agreement some protection for the city, if that's a concern of yours, for sure. That's what I'm doing anyway.
I just wasn't sure if the language of the resolution itself was misleading. But if it's fine with you.
Which portion was it concerned?
The fact that the NHL subsidizes the entire program.
I can see it would ultimately fall down to the actual agreement entered into between the parties. So I can put in the appropriate protection.
Then my, my second question goes to, is there, there a budgeted value for one hour of ice time that it costs to actually run the facility?
I mean,
Like an all-in.
In terms of, of what it costs us to operate for an hour's worth of ice?
Yeah, because, you know, I look at the revenue lines we have for the ice arena, which comes to 569,000. And then I look for the expense lines of the ice arena, and it's 662,000. So that means the ice arena operates at a loss of 92 theoretically. So I'm just trying to understand, does this program move the ball on that, on that negative variance at all?
Yeah, thi- this program is well beyond self-sufficient. In, in other words, the Rangers collect the fees with what they share with us in terms of the partnership and the number of kids that partake in the program. We're well-flushed in terms of, this is probably one of our more profitable adventures that, that we, you know, ourselves operate down there. You know, we certainly couldn't attract the number of kids that are programmed, you know, to one of our own camps or house league programs that, that the Rangers can attract. You know, their marketing brand brings so many more kids down here. You know, without COVID, we can put, you know, upwards of 65, 70 kids on the ice at a time with, with a program like this, and we're getting reimbursed at a minimum 125 per player. So this certainly, for the amount of time that they use the ice and the amount of ice that we allocate for it, this is definitely one of the more profitable ventures that we have at the arena.
And my, my, my final question has to do with the, the six on-ice coaches for each program that the city, that the city supplies. Are those in the $310,000 temp salaries line for the ice arena?
They're, they're part of our temporary salary line. But the way, it, we don't supply six, it could be upwards of six if they're, if the numbers were, were to dictate that. Last year, we had, I think, 66 kids in the program, and we put four instructors on the ice, the Rangers provided two, and if need be, I, I put my skates on and I went out and helped out. So at a, at a maximum, for one program, you would have four people. The girls, the Learn to Play, they're, they're much, much less, probably like two instructors per. And they're only getting, I mean, they're at 20 bucks for a session, so you'd be talking about $80 a night.
I will, I'm excited to go check, wow, check it out and watch the kids play. Thank you, Joe.
You'll be impressed, it's a pretty good program.
I have no doubt.
Can we sign Karen up and teach her to cross-check?
Oh, gosh, no. I'm more of a hip.
I'm in. John, I only have one question for Joe. Is 65 registered participants, is that a reach, a stretch, or you'll be turning people away? Is it a program that is?
No, you'd be amazed at how quickly this program sells out. Like I said, without COVID, we, we would take upwards of 65 people. But, you know, the, the governor has restrictions with how many people should be on the ice at a time. So we limit it to, you know, we'll normally take for a program like this, we would sign up 36, and, and we would leave it at that. Unfortunately, that's just the, the nature of the beast right now, which will obviously result in us utilizing less instructors too. So it's all relative. But hopefully, we'll be back sooner and, and the bigger numbers will be back.
And Joe, how do people find out about this? Is it something that we have a link on the recreation page?
Yeah, it's newyorkrangers.com. I mean, their advertisements are everywhere in the arena, you know, it's, it's part of the arena website. They can download it from there, but, I mean, this is one of the more well-known. Every NHL team across the country runs one of these Learn to Play programs. It's a grassroots efforts to attract kids to the game and try and make it, you know, get them hooked on a sport at an affordable price. Obviously, and, and, you know, have them as, as part of their fan base for, for the rest of their year. So you turn on a hockey game, you hear about it. If you watch a Ranger game, I mean, you'll see videos from Long Beach Arena and Ice Arena employees on the Jumbotron at a game, on TV at commercial breaks. I mean, their marketing cachet obviously is, is so far-reaching. This program starts and, and fills up, you know, that's more of a problem than anything is how quickly it does sell out.
And Joe, my last question is, what age brackets are usually involved in these different programs?
From like four to 10.
Oh, okay.
And then the girls are like till 14.
Four years old, okay, thank you, Joe.
Yep, and then they leave those programs, they graduate, and they become part of like our in-house house league program. So it's, you know, I mean, it greatly impacts the economy of the arena, you know, from, from the city's standpoint, too. You know, these kids go to our public sessions, they come to our sticks and pucks, they join our house leagues, you know, they're recurring customers once we get them in the building, and thankfully, the Rangers offer a program, you know, that gets them into the building.
Well, on the, on the final note, your Long Beach, if they feed into the Long Beach High School hockey program, they've done very, they've done very well, so. What, you have two state championships in the last 10 years?
Well, five altogether. We got three, two in the last, well, two in the last two years, but then there was a little bit of a stretch, but five altogether.
Well, thanks, Joe.
My pleasure, Mike.
All right, any more questions from the council? All right, seeing none. Dave, we got any from the public?
Yes, we do, Roy Lester.
Okay.
I, I'm a little confused. Karen asked a question about us losing 95,000 a year on the ice arena, and if, if this program was going to take care of that. And all I really heard was, it's a very profitable program, it's a great program, et cetera, et cetera. But do we actually make enough, do we make the 95,000 to overcome our deficit right now?
Roy, that's not the purpose, this program covers its expenses and then some, so.
John, John, all I'm asking, Karen asked the question. I'm just looking for the answer. Does this program take into account, it's a great program, nobody's saying that. I'm just trying to find out if it takes care of the 95,000 we're losing.
Right, right, I, I will just say that in bringing it up, I have full confidence in Joe and Donna and the entire staff who worked to close that deficit. So I have, they, they deserve a chance to do it. We've got a few months left, and I know in my heart that they'll, they'll do everything they can to close that gap.
But is, is this the same program we've had these last few years?
Yes, this program has been in the building for six-plus years.
But it's never closed the gap, right? But this year, you expect, Karen, you're expected to close the gap this year?
No, no, I'm saying that there are several programs and that Joe and the team are working to close that gap. That's why there were RFPs issued throughout, earlier in the fall, and they're working feverishly to figure out how to close that gap. This requires innovation, it requires a lot of dialogue and discussion, and they're, they're, they're working to turn around this, this model so that it's profitable going forward. It doesn't, doesn't happen overnight.
Right, but isn't that the whole purpose of the RFP is because we've had a gap all these years?
But this is only one of many programs, Roy, so, so I'm sure is that this program runs profitable. So therefore, I am comfortable with it. And the, the idea is that this is the model that every single program needs to have going forward, and that's.
Karen, I'm just asking about the money. I, nobody's saying anything, the program's great, I'm just asking about the money.
The money is that they're, they're working to close the gap, and, and if they close it, that's, remains to be seen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Dave?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay, let's move on to item five.
Okay, item five is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding vehicles for hire. Science publication only hearing will be held February 16th at 7:00 PM. Item six is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding licenses and public business regulations. The science publication only hearing will be held February 16th at 7:00 PM. And finally, item seven is a resolution authorizing publication of notice of public hearing of an application wave of street parking requirements for premise 163 East Park Avenue, street floor for a kosher foods and grocery product shop. The science publication only hearing will be held February 16th, again, at 7:00 PM. Back to the voting. We've already voted on item one, so we're gonna go to item two, which is a resolution authorizing commencement of litigation. We want you to just move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Karen, good, Karen.
Second?
I will.
You will, okay. Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item three is resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the New York Rangers LLC. We want you to just move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Go blue, yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the current agreement with coastal planning and engineering of New York PC in assisting with, in assisting the city with our coordinated efforts with the US Army Corps of Engineers. We want you to just move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will, Liz.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item five is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding vehicles for hire. We want you to just move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item six is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding licenses and business regulations. We want you to just move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
And finally, item seven is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive Wall Street parking requirements for premise 163 East Park Avenue for a kosher foods and grocery product shop. We want you to just move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes. All right.
Do you believe we have a motion at this time?
Yeah, so I'm gonna make a motion that, to go into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, and discussions regarding proposed, pending, or current litigation.
I have a second.
I will.
I'm sorry, who, who got that?
Alan.
Okay. Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay, folks, so council's gonna go into executive session, they're going to be leaving this meeting. I'm going to be stopping the recording and the streaming at this time. Once they're done with executive session, they will rejoin the meeting, and I will restart the, the stream for folks watching on YouTube. I'm gonna try to reuse the same stream, but if not, look for a part two stream that will come up shortly.
Dave, for people that are on the Zoom, they just stay on the Zoom?
For folks on Zoom, just stay on the Zoom.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you in a little bit.
Mike, mute yourself, thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
I was about to send out a search party.
We saw people, Dave, we're not recording, right?
We're not recording, but all the attendees are still on, so you're live to the, to the public.
Very good.
All right, folks, just stand by a couple more minutes, we'll wait for everybody to reconnect, and then we'll get started, so everybody just sit tight for about two minutes.
Welcome back, we're not recording yet, but we still have the attendees online, so.
Okay.
Looks like we're just still waiting for a couple more people to reconnect, so let's just give them another minute. Running on. Karen, did you get connected there?
Yeah, I think I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, somehow you got put on put to the attendee side up. I moved you up. Okay. Okay, it looks like we have everybody back on. Uh, okay, are we ready for motion to close?
Uh, yeah, we're ready for a most, so I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Second.
Okay, voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, on the Good and Welfare, so I think most people know the drill. Three minutes and uh.
Okay, first up is is a very patient Lou Dubow has had his hand up the whole time.
Okay.
Go ahead, Lou.
Hey, Lou.
Good evening. Does everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Terrific, good. Happy New Year. I haven't seen you guys in a while.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Yes, it's been a long time. Um, I have a couple of quick questions. I know it's late. My first question, which kind of is going to say it all. What are we recycling tomorrow? Is it paper? Quick, quick answer, paper or is it or is it metal and plastic?
Metal and plastic tomorrow.
And how do you know that so quickly, John?
Because we talked about it earlier in the meeting.
Oh, I missed that part of the meeting.
Yeah, it was in the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, yeah, I tuned in late. Um, how is that working out so far? Are people actually doing that, separating it? Because I find it personally, I find it very confusing. I'm very, very conscientious about separating my 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 paper and the plastic and metals. But I I don't know how well this is working. I don't know if people really realize that it's separated at this point. Or if they know which day of the week. You know, the the Wednesday it's supposed to be, although at the actually I'd called the sanitation department yesterday in terms of snow removal and the answer machine I got was still referring to the the old new method that's on the calendar. So I I would think there's a lot of confusion going on about this.
This is Donna, the city manager. I will make sure that sanitation changes their um, their message. And Mr. McNally, would you like to tell him where he can find it on the website? So that he will know each week what we're picking up.
Sure thing. And Lou.
That up, we will get more information out to the public so they to alleviate any confusion.
Sure thing, Lou. I mean, and obviously we know there's going to be a learning curve on any of this. So you know that that's inherent in this process, but um, a new year-long calendar, one pager that anybody can print up, black and white or color or color is on the website at Long Beach N. Y. Backslash recycle.
Okay.
Recycling, so.
A couple of quick questions about this process. Are there, um, I'll ask, I'll ask a couple of questions and then you could answer them. Um, are there different trucks used for the paper? And different trucks for the metal and and plastic? And are these different trucks than the than the regular garbage trucks? And if there are different trucks, would it make sense to still go back to a Wednesday for everything and have one truck start in the West End and one truck start in the East End? So at least you don't have all the trucks kind of running into each other? I think that's all I got in terms of questions about this.
So they are our regular sanitation trucks. Uh, and one of the problems is, you know, so what you're talking about is if we did all of it on one day.
Correct.
Is what we had tried to do, but split the city up into five different zones. You had to run two separate trucks to go service each zone. And that was resulting in enormous overtime, a lot of confusion with residents um, and no efficiencies and uh, streets that were not as clean as our sanitation department would have liked. So the decision was made to, you know, and a pretty quick and affirmative decision was made only two weeks into that schedule that it was not working and we were going to shift to this, which is just, you know, for the record, what more than half of the municipalities on Long Island do. As everybody has been shifted over to, almost everybody has been shifted over to dual stream recycling. Almost all the municipalities on Long Island are doing the alternate week recycling. So we're not, we're not unique here. We're sending, you know, one truck out to do each of the loads once a week, but we're alternating weeks.
Okay, um, I just think there's some confusion and I hope that people kind of get on board with it because I, you know, it's.
No, it's it's a, it's a, it's a learning curve and it's adjustment. We're cognizant of it and we're continuing to get the educational information out there and try and make sure our residents are aware of what the new procedures are.
Okay, good, okay, just um, because I was trying to figure out what I'm supposed to put out tomorrow. And then I had to actually go back to a previous email. I missed the early part of the meeting, sorry about that. So at least I know what I'm putting out tomorrow. So which I believe is plastic and metal.
Yes.
And glass.
And glass, right, okay, good, I'm good, okay. Thank you, that's all I got for you guys, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Lou.
Right.
All right, who's next, Dave?
Next is Michelle Kelly.
Okay.
Michelle, go ahead and unmute.
Okay, good. Hi, how is everyone? Good evening.
Hi, Michelle.
I have a few concerns regarding the construction at 75 Crowley Street. This house is adjacent to our backyard and as you are all aware, a major safety issue occurred last week during the framing out of the top floor. I would like to first of all, thank the building department for reaching out to P. S. E. G. L. I. in a speedy fashion, but I am concerned about the following. I have a few questions, so um, through the three minutes, I would just like to read the questions and then possibly you could answer them after. Okay, one, we were told an inspector was dispatched and onsite within 10 minutes of the notification that the primary electrical wire was rubbing up against the newly constructed roof frame. Why wasn't a stop work order not immediately made by the city of Long Beach? Does the city not have the authority to do so? It took four hours to shut down the site and work continued until 5:00 P. M. My next question is, how many violations does it take until a developer contractor can no longer build in the city of Long Beach? My third question is, why is it that a developer can change a one-story structure that takes up approximately 30% of the plot to a three-story house with a roof deck, actually three and a half, including the garage? Does not have to inform the neighbors, especially with such a dramatic change of character to the neighborhood? But I, and I have done this, would have to file a variance for an eight-foot fence on my side or front yards or for a pre-existing curb cut for a driveway after Sandy. Our neighborhoods are being changed dramatically by density and height. The residents are helpless due to the current zoning laws. As in this case, the developer didn't have to file any variances and building as far up and out as they can. My fourth question, wouldn't it be the job of the architectural, excuse me, architectural review board to see if plans fit into the character of the neighborhood? On the city website, no one is listed as a member of the architectural review board. Do we no longer have one? What is the council doing to protect the safety of our residents and the character of our neighborhoods? I'm really concerned. I have a wire that is very precarious behind my house. P. S. E. L., sorry, P. S. E. G. L. I. came and they put a Band-Aid on it. And we just experienced an extraordinarily windstorm. And that wire has been rubbing against the peak of that roof frame for over 24 hours and I'm just waiting for a spot to occur. My current situation is what I just said. There's been no more visits from P. S. E. G. L. I. I do not know what the building department is doing. What is the council doing to stop this and inform the residents and also stop the overdevelopment of our neighborhood?
And that is your time.
Okay, uh, I don't think we have anyone from the buildings department on.
Mr. McNally will address some of the questions.
Okay.
Sure, and we had, we had Scott on earlier, but he had to drop off. You know, so, I mean, there was, Ms. Kelly forwarded a number of questions earlier on today. I won't go through all of them since she didn't quite ask all of them. But it's, you know, with number one was, we had an inspector onsite within 10 minutes of them lodging a complaint um, and expressing concerns. But why were they were asking why the enforcement didn't happen immediately once our inspector showed up? That answer is because the inspector didn't know if the the wire was live or not. And we were waiting for P. S. E. G. um, on the scene to let us know because P. S. E. N. G. actually gave the developer the clearance. See, I'm sorry, I'm just scrolling through an email where Scott gave us some answers. You know, in in terms of how many violations was one of the other questions from Michelle? I don't have an answer for that, but we will get back to you on it. The architectural review board, there's an advisory board and an actual board. The actual board is the council. You know, when this, when this project went through the the process, it was approved by the council. And again, it it is within all of the zoning codes. You know, and I know there's a number of people in that area that have availed themselves of using the full lot size or using themselves the full height. Some have done both. This developer has actually done both. But everything is within the zoning, so there's, there's not a whole lot of grounds for denying what was applied for because it's within the code. So you know, it's, it's not what you want. It's not necessarily what any of us would want, but it's within the code. So you know, as indicated in an earlier email to to both you and your husband, you know, that that's a change in in zoning that you'd be looking for. And then what am I missing, Michelle, from your questions?
What are you doing to protect the safety of me, my family and the my my neighbors? We have a very precarious wire that has a Band-Aid on it.
So they, you know, it has a Band-Aid on it. That is, at this stage of the game, between P. S. E. G. and the developer, P. S. E. G. did a cease and desist. The city did a stop work order and it is up to P. S. E. G. and the developer to come to a mutually agree upon situation or, you know, solution to what the situation is. Um, and until that is agreed upon, they will not be able to, um, you know, continue with any work on the house.
Okay, so to go back to how many violations does it take? This developer has had violations in the past. And obviously, this is a pretty big one to me personally. What does it take to to have somebody's license revoked from working in the city of Long Beach? We we rely on you for protection to make sure that things are safe.
John, you're muted if you're talking.
Sorry about that. No, I mean, I I think that's one of the questions I need to go back to on what the criteria is. I mean, but there's, there's a difference between a developer and a construction company. You know, and I I think what we're generally talking about is a developer that has been aggressive and may have utilized multiple construction companies over time. This is something I would need to dig further into. But you know, I think, I think the larger issue you're raising is this is a developer who has looked to squeeze every drop of blood out of a stone in multiple developments. And the city has challenged him on on many of those developments over the course of many, many years. And as indicated in our, you know, my email to you, to varying degrees of success. Sometimes the city's had a legal standing and has succeeded. Sometimes it's not, and it's not. But I I I cannot say with any degree of certainty whether there's been, you know, ongoing violations with each of those construction projects. I just know that there's been, this is a developer that likes to push it to the max and maximize their profit potential. And the city has pushed back over the years on certain requests made by that developer with varying degrees of success. So you know, in terms of violations, that's something that I will go back to the building department on and say how many violations have been issued? Is it a specific contractor? You know, and and what remedies are in place if a specific contractor, you know, runs afoul X number of times? You know, what is that X number of times before they can no longer, you know, be authorized to do work in our city?
That's, that's three minutes there, guys.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
And you can, happy to, you know, take this up offline with you, Michelle, any other time, obviously.
All right, we'll, we'll talk about the council being the architectural review board in an email. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, who's next, Dave?
Next is Roy Lester.
Okay.
John, this meeting you just had, that was the same one that you had last night or we were supposed to have last night?
No.
A totally different, what happened to last night's meeting?
Uh, it was, they announced it earlier in the meeting, it was postponed.
So why did this meeting have to, why did you have to go into executive session now and keep us all on hold for hour and whatever?
Because that's.
Rather than rescheduling.
Rescheduling what?
The executive session like you did last night.
Because the this executive session, that's the way the process works.
No, John, John, it was rude, okay? Anyway, let me go to my questions. Last week, Donna said that we um, showed 59, uh, $55 million in our financials to Moody. How did we show that? And how did we show we were going to pay that? That was for the Haberman case. And can you, you know, if you can answer that, uh, put the clock on hold, please.
No, I don't have that in front of me, um, Roy, the Moody's statement. Um, I will get that statement and either either Edna or I will call you. I don't have that in front of me.
Okay.
And Roy, before you jump into your time, I mean, I mean, you well know from the school board, executive sessions need to take place uh, in in the midst of a a public meeting, which this is, so this is when these things take place.
But John, you know that you can call in a public meeting like you did last night. And then you go into executive session, which was exactly what you had planned to do last night. And you could have done it for tomorrow. You could have done it at any other time. You could have actually done it after this meeting.
And Roy, you you would have, so last night was on a separate matter and you would have, and I was not on either subject matters and I'm not, I don't even know what either of them are. But then you or somebody else would have claimed that, oh, they're doing another meeting in private separately, so.
No.
There's no win here.
This is Donna, excuse me, this is Donna, duly noted, Roy. I understand.
I just find it really, it was rude to a lot of people. Okay, um, I had asked questions about recycling. And you know, I I was told I would get a call back. I didn't. My questions are, how many tons do we recycle each year? Who do we pay to take it? Do they actually sell our recycling? Do they recycle it? Do they incinerate it? Do they put it to a landfill? Do we know any of that or do they export it to some third world countries?
Roy, you asked this question at the last Good and Welfare and John Morando answered it. It goes to.
No, he did not.
It goes to.
No, he did not.
Roy, please stop arguing, Roy, and let me talk.
Okay.
It goes to sanitary district one. What sanitary district one does with, he talked about what sanitary district one does with it. He's not on the line now.
John, I listened to it before I wrote the questions down. Okay.
Hey, Roy, can I have John Morando give you a call? And then you could.
Yeah, if someone will give me a call.
On it at the next meeting because no one's on the call right now to answer that question.
Okay, because you know, I have a lot of questions.
What I'll do, I'll call you tomorrow and I'll get all the questions you have about recycling. And then just so we keep the public in the loop, after we. after we answer your questions, we will come back at the next meeting in Good and Welfare and also let the public know the answers to those questions.
Okay. And, and also I asked about our regular garbage and I asked about the cost of our regular garbage.
Okay, I'll, I'll get all the questions from you tomorrow, Roy. I'll get them from you tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next, Dave?
Peter Rovitz.
All right. Hi, Peter.
Hi, how are you? Good evening, everybody. A couple of questions. The RFP for the rink went out. How many proposals were received and what's, and what's the current status of those proposals?
I can take that. Right now, two proposals were received, I believe, and we are now kind of deliberating the award process. We'll be putting something out shortly as to the city's determination on, on the status of those proposals.
Okay, and one more question. Vice President McGinnis, you said that the rink was operating at a 55,000, $95,000 deficit.
Oh, no. Oh, I'm sorry. That's not correct. But my, my statement was that the budget for the ice rink was a net loss of $92,000. And so that doesn't mean that's what it is. And that's what, you know, I just pointed out so that we could monitor that because we wanted, of course, to be net positive.
Okay, but including those figures, is there the cost of fringe benefits, payroll taxes, bond, bond payments for work that was done on the rink?
Bond, capital costs are not included in the operating budget. So that is, you know, common, you know, common practice. So that would not be included. In terms of fringe benefits, right now, our systems do not have the capacity to budget fringe benefits by department, which is something that hopefully that we will eventually be able to do in the future. Therefore, we cannot analyze any department right now per se when we include the benefits. We, you can use an estimate. So right now, in analyzing any department in terms of revenues and expenses, we do not include fringe benefits.
So how do you get a true, how do you get a true determination of where those costs lie? If that's a true number of? If, if.
I said, usually it's called an EPMB. You use an estimated fringe cost. And that's what the, that's what the controller's office and finance teams use when they do analyses.
Okay, but, okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Peter. Have a good night.
You too.
All right, Dave, we got anyone else?
Do. Next is Kathleen O'Leary.
Ah, welcome back.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I would like to echo the woman who was speaking about the construction going on next to her. It's my understanding in most places, an architectural board is made up of architects. So we know disrespect to the council, but I hardly think that they're qualified to be making architectural decisions. And also I find there's a trend here of taking historic buildings and converting them into McMansions. I have one next door to me that was built around 1919. They just took it. They built the front porch all the way up to the sidewalk. I lost my sunlight. I lost my view and there was nothing I could do about it. And in terms of turning the municipal garage, municipal garage into a Popeyes, that's just another case of another historic building being repurposed. And I don't see any overall plan for the city. I know there was a planning commission set up with a lot of money to spend before everything went south. But I don't see anybody with a master plan here. We're just going like, you know, elevate on one side, take a historic building and turn it into like a roof garden with three stories. I, I don't see the, the master plan here. And I don't like what I'm seeing either.
Well, there's, there is a, the new planning, what is it, planning board or planning commission? I think we call it a planning commission. Planning Advisory Board, sorry, Planning Advisory Board that is actually working on updating the city's comprehensive plan. And then once the comprehensive plan is updated and approved, then what happens is you start making zoning changes to align with the, the approved comprehensive plan. So there's, there's a planning commission board which is made up of residents, which are, which are, have started the process of, of going through and, and updating a, a comprehensive plan for the city. And that, that's the first step. And then, like I said, once a comprehensive plan gets approved, you start making the zoning updates to align with the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
If I could just jump in there too. So it's the next, the next step after an approved comprehensive plan is not changing the zoning, but it's then doing an analysis of the zoning.
Well.
So it's, it's not quite so, so cut and dry. There, there's give and take and choices to be made there. And then just to Miss O'Leary's earlier point, there's, there's an architectural advisory board which are, is comprised of a number of people and we'll, we'll get the names up on the website, but those are people that have the bona fides to be in architectural advisory board that they take a recommendation to the council. And then the council, you know, by virtue of our charter, sets in place that they are, you know, this is our arcane charter to some degree, but the charter says that the council is the architectural advisory board and they're the ones that ultimately need to approve it. So the, you know, have, have some solace that the, the advisory board has, has some chops on this stuff.
I, I thought, I thought the. Advisory board going to take into account the history of Long Beach and that commission to do the comprehensive plan. If my memory serves me right, that's been going on for four years. When is it getting off the ground? Like, when are we going to see results?
It's a plan, the planning commission just was reactivated. There was a plan that was done many years ago that was accepted. And then there was a plan that they brought in, the city brought in some consultants that was not accepted. And then the, the commission went dormant. So it just was brought back. I believe that first meeting was November of last year. They have now, they have the old plan. They had the revised plan. And then they've been separated into groups to start working on the, to correct and work on the new plan. So it hasn't been worked on for years.
Okay.
Yeah. And once the plan is completed, then we go out and we'll have probably, we're still in COVID, we'll have Zoom meetings with the public about different areas of the plan.
I just wanted to clarify that there is an architectural review board made up of architects, as stated earlier, that review the plans to make sure that they are within, you know, the specs of the city. So they give the okay. And then the council members are members of the architectural review board, which basically review the work of the advisory board to make sure it's in, in compliance. And then it gets, then it's passed through. So there are two checks to make sure that, and, and the first check is the, the people are qualified as architects.
Okay, thank you.
And then you, to the second point where you asked about the, you know, the planning commission and the master plan. What's interesting is that the city council doesn't just go out and make all these changes. We hired Donna to come in to run the city and Donna has been working diligently to populate all the boards and commissions of the city. All these boards and commissions work. They collaborate and they form consensus to go ahead and say, hey, we need to update the zoning. Hey, we need to update the comprehensive plan. So we're building, we're building our base and getting community involvement to make the decisions and that we need to move this city forward. And it doesn't happen overnight, unfortunately. And I can believe, believe me, we all wish it could, but it can't. But the thing is that Donna has vetted all of these candidates. We have very talented members of the city that are working precisely on these problems that were brought up tonight. So this council is moving forward to, to make the, to address these issues.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kathleen.
You're welcome.
All right. We have anyone else, Dave?
Yes, Dave DiPiola.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir. So DiPiola, you're, you can go ahead and unmute your mic. Try one more time. Mr. DiPiola, you're, you're, you're you're still muted, so we can't hear you. No, I'm getting no response.
Okay, so let's, let's move on.
Nope, that's it. That was our last.
Okay, well, thanks for joining us tonight, folks, and we'll, we'll see you in a couple of weeks. And everyone have a good night.
Dave?
Night.
Night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience.